We've just got a couple of people missing, we're just going to give them a call first before we start, so it'll just be a small delay, if you just bear with us.
Good afternoon everybody and welcome to this afternoon's Planning and Environmental Protection Committee. Just for everybody's information, should there be a fire alarm, although we're not expecting one of course, please proceed via the nearest fire exit, either front or back of the building, and the assembly point is near the multi-storey car park that you passed on the way in. Also, if you are called to the front because of Covid restrictions, can you please consider using the wipes and the gels that are on your table when you're touching your mic? And as you approach, just extra precaution, it's your choice. Okay, item one then is apologies for absence.
Thank you Chair, we do have apologies from councillor Sharp and councillor Rush is in attendance as a substitute. We have apologies from councillor Warren and councillor Ikpow.
Okay, thank you, councillor Rush, thank you for standing in for councillor Sharp. Okay. Item two then is declarations of interest. Councillor Hiller?
Yeah, thank you Chair, just a minor declaration, I shall be speaking on behalf of the applicant at item 5.3.
Okay, so you'll then go to the public gallery, thank you. Anybody else? No. Item three then is members declaration of intention to make representations as the ward councillor. Item four is the minutes of the meeting held on the 14th of December 2021, pages five to 16 in your packs. Can I have, or are we going to agree their A true account? All agreed? Yeah, thank you very much. Item five then is development control and enforcement matters. Item 5.1 relates to the former Stanland Court site, Warrington Centre, pages 17 to 56 in your packs and will be presented this afternoon by Louise Simmons when you're ready.
Thank you Chair. The application before you seeks the construction of 59 residential dwellings which would be 100% affordable across three blocks land at Warrington Centre. The proposal also includes two retail commercial units and associated parking and landscaping. This slide shows the application site edged in red. The site forms part of the identified Warrington District Centre which comprises a large Tesco retail store, petrol filling station, public house and a parade of smaller retail and commercial units. To the north-eastern and western corners of the centre are offices of Olympus and Sundance House and the site also contains a medical centre which includes a dentist and doctor's surgery. There is a correction to the main committee report whereby the description of the site states the doctor's surgery is vacant, this is not the case. A large communal but private car park serves the centre. To the north, east and south of the district centre are residential estates with the Ken Stimson Secondary School, Warrington Library and Sports Centre to the west. Next slide please. And this slide shows the extent of the application site as currently exists. It includes an existing area of hard and soft landscaping accessed off Goodwin Walk to the east and provides a bus stop serving the district centre. Goodwin Walk is a bus route only. Also included within the red line is part of the Tesco store service yard and vehicular access serving that store from Stanland Way to the north. The site includes a number of mature trees and established soft landscaping. This is an up-to-date aerial photograph of the site. The aerial photograph clearly shows the wider district centre along with the closest residential dwellings to the site which are located in Ploughley to the far right-hand side of the photograph. Moving to look at photographs of the site, officers are conscious that unfortunately the site visit was cancelled on Friday, so we're going to provide as many photographs as we can for you. This slide shows the Goodwin Walk which is taken from the junction of Skaters Way looking northwards. As I mentioned earlier, Goodwin Walk is a bus route only. The application site is off to the far left-hand side of the picture and the dwellings shown are those closest to the proposed development on Ploughley. From the same junction, this photograph shows the application site again over to the left-hand side. Moving in towards the site, this photograph shows the main part of the site which includes the bus stop, an in-and-out arrangement so that buses don't need to turn within the site, mature trees and the landscaping. The rear of the Tesco store and the parade of shops can be seen in the far distance to the left and Olympus House in the distance to the right centre. Taken within the application site and looking south, this shows the relationship of the main bulk of the site to the Tesco service yard and the parade of shops. Then moving further north onto Goodwin Walk, this is taken from within the site looking out towards dwellings along Ploughley which members will note is two-storey development. And again from Goodwin Walk, this photograph is taken from Ploughley looking back towards the application site. Continuing to look south along Goodwin Walk, this shows the context of the tree-lined highway with the application site to the right-hand side. And then looking from the application site, these show more dwellings along Ploughley to give you an idea of the context of the built form that the dwellings would have up to. Now moving into the district centre, this photograph shows the parade of single-storey retail commercial units, some of which are boarded up. And here, the opposite side of the parade with an open area between. This open area used to contain landscaping but was removed at the request of police owing to crime and antisocial behaviour issues associated with the landscaping. This photograph is taken from the parade of shops within the district centre looking back towards the application site. You'll note the direct line from the bus stop and Goodwin Walk into the district centre. The site includes a number of footpath links from and between Goodwin Walk and the district centre and this shows the path which runs to the south-west along the boundary with the medical centre which is on the left-hand side. As I mentioned earlier, the Tesco service yard is included within the application site and this shows the yard in its present form. The main body of the application site is to the rear of the large wall on the left-hand side. Panning to the north, this shows the parking within the service yard which currently is occupied by staff. And then panning further to the north, this photograph shows the access to the site on the far left-hand side which is on to Stanland Way and Olympus House is beyond that in front of you with the application site towards the right-hand side behind the wall. And this photograph better shows the access to the site with the petrol filling station for Tesco adjacent. Finally, this photograph shows Skaters Way which runs along the southern side of the site, apologies, and shows the existing on-street parking and this was taken around about mid-morning yesterday to give you an idea of the parking. So now turning to the proposal in more detail. The 59 residential units would be entirely affordable rented tenure. The mix would be 29 one-bed two-person units, 18 two-bed three-person units and 12 two-bed four-person units. They would be provided in three blocks and these are identified as 1, 2 and 3 on this drawing. Two blocks would stand at three stories in height which is shown here as blocks 1 and 2. Apologies. I'll just pause there. Members can't see the slides, so I'll just pause for a second.
It's knocking the presentation off.
Okay.
Sorry about the delay, carry on please then, Louise.
Thank you Chair. Two blocks would stand at three stories in height and these are shown here as blocks 1 and 2 to the eastern side. They would front onto Goodwin Walk. The third block would be two stories with residential units at first floor and two retail commercial units at ground floor. This would be sited adjacent to the existing parade of shops. 75 parking spaces are proposed alongside incidental soft and hard landscaping. In addition, the existing bus stop would be relocated to the south-eastern corner of the site off Goodwin Walk. In terms of the principle of development, mixed uses are sought within identified district centres and officers are of the view that the proposal would provide for both retail and residential development and the principle can be supported. In addition, the council's strategic housing market assessment has identified a need for 559 new affordable dwellings each year during the local plan period. The council has fallen below this target with only 680 affordable homes completed up to 2020. As such, there will be considerable benefit arising from the proposed affordable homes which officers consider carry significant weight. However, it is noted that the proposed development would result in the loss of public open space and the council's open space officer has objected to the proposal on that basis. Whilst the comments and the concerns are noted, officers are of the view that whilst no open space should be taken as surplus to requirements, Warrington exceeds the requirements for its existing and planned population by some 3.7 hectares. In addition, the proposed development would amount to the loss of 0.01 hectares of open space which we consider is more of a visual amenity than a practical amenity for occupiers. Therefore, we don't consider that it makes an important contribution to the network of green spaces in the area. As such, on balance, we're of the view that the benefit arising from the affordable housing outweighs the limited harm from the public open space loss. The application has sparked considerable public interest and there have been considerable number of objections. 200 objections were received at the time of writing the main committee report and these include objections from the ward councillor, councillors, apologies, Warrington Neighbourhood Council, MP Paul Bristow and the Peter Brusick Society. Fifteen letters of support were received. A further 18 letters of objection have been received following completion of the report alongside objections from Warrington Neighbourhood Council and a petition of 62 signatories. A letter of support has also been received. These are all set out in the briefing update report bar one, there was a late representation received at half past six last night. However, that doesn't contain any new information in this repeat of a representation we received that was considered at the time of writing the main report. The main areas of objection, and this doesn't cover all of them, but the main areas relate to overdevelopment of the site, design, parking, neighbourhood amenity and infrastructure concerns. Turning to look at the other material considerations, the following slides will show the design of the proposal in more detail. This slide shows the proposed elevations for the development and the top drawing is the main eastern elevation which would be visible along Goodwin Walk. The bottom shows the southern elevation and the relationship between blocks 2 and 3. Thanks Karen. This shows the western elevation which would front towards the Warrington Centre and on to the proposed car park and the northern elevation would face towards Olympus House. And these are the elevations in more detail for block 3 which is obviously of two-story, not three-story design. Thanks Karen. And this is the development within its context, so apologies, it's quite small but I couldn't fit it in any larger. So this shows the context of the application proposal in relation to the building heights within the existing district centre. The bottom drawing shows the relationship to Olympus House and shows that the height would not be greater than Olympus House. This is one of the visuals of the proposed development which looks from Goodwin Walk towards the district centre and shows the main thoroughfare that would be created. And this is the visual again from Goodwin Walk showing the relocated bus stop and the block 2 beyond. Officers are of the view that the design of the proposed development is good quality. The layout is considered to follow the rhythm and built form of the centre and whilst walking times may be marginally increased as a result of the proposal, the layout would provide a clear and legible route from the bus stop and Goodwin Walk to the district centre. Blocks 1 and 2 would be set a sufficient distance from the trees along Goodwin Walk to provide breathing space to the public realm and there would be a clear distinction of public and private space. The architectural style of the blocks would mirror the strong sense of place that Warrington District Centre has and continue the strong roofscapes through mansard roof design. The use of differentiating brick colours would achieve a reduction in the horizontal mass of the building such that it would not appear unduly dominant or obtrusive. The proposal would result in the loss of a number of mature trees unfortunately and on that basis the council's tree officer has objected. Officers are conscious that the loss of such a large number of trees would result in harm to the visual amenity of the area. However, the benefits arising from the affordable housing provision is considered to outweigh this and in addition, the applicant proposes to plant trees along Goodwin Walk where gaps presently exist so that the tree-lined avenue is maintained and they would provide a financial contribution to ensure that 46 trees are planted within the locality to mitigate the loss. The exact figure for this contribution is set out within your update report and has been provided by the council's tree officer. In terms of crime, the police have raised no objection to the proposal. A pocket park, which is an urban area of hard and soft landscaping essentially, was originally proposed as part of the development, however, the police objected as that went against the drive that... against the drive that they had made to remove landscaping, and they feared that introducing planting may pose a further risk to crime and antisocial behaviour. Officers are proposing a condition relating to hard and soft landscaping, and we will of course consult with the police should members resolve to grant permission to ensure that any landscaping has their full backing. In terms of parking provision, the proposal would not meet the council's minimum adopted parking standard, and would be deficient by twenty-seven spaces based on the mix of dwellings proposed. However, the applicant has provided robust justification, which is accepted by the local highway authority for this lack of policy compliance. A mixture of census data, parking surveys, and survey of car ownership with comparative developments within the city has identified that developments for affordable housing do not generate the levels of car ownership that our parking standard requires. As such, in this instance and based on the evidence submitted, the less parking is accepted. In the event that on-street parking were to result, the applicant has also demonstrated through parking beat surveys that there would be adequate capacity without resulting in an unacceptable highway safety danger. Cycle parking would be secured by condition, and the applicant has demonstrated that safe access and turning would be provided both for refuse vehicles and the service yard of the Tesco store. The re-provided bus stop is accepted in the location shown by the local highway authority. The council's pollution control officer has raised objection to the submitted noise assessment as they do not feel that the assessment adequately deals with noise from the service yard. Nonetheless, a suitable scheme of mitigation can be readily secured by condition. Future occupiers would be afforded an acceptable level of amenity subject to revised bin storage locations, which is proposed to be secured by condition. And the proposal would not result in unacceptable harm to the amenities of neighbouring occupants. Sufficient separation would be afforded to prevent undue overbearing or overlooking impact to the neighbours surrounding the site. All other material considerations are considered acceptable, those being drainage, ecology, contamination, and archaeology as set out within the main committee report. councillor Fox, prior to the meeting today, has requested that officers address three specific questions within our presentation, and I shall do so now. Firstly, he has queried why some of the matters proposed to be covered by conditions have not been met prior to coming before members. It's not unusual for applications to have a number of technical matters left to be resolved when they are dealt with at application stage. There is sufficient information submitted for officers to offer a recommendation before you today, and it is not felt that it is essential for the matters that we have proposed to be conditioned to be dealt with prior to determination. councillor Fox has also queried whether the development be stopped in the event that conditions were breached or not discharged. Officers will always seek to ensure compliance with planning conditions imposed upon a permission. However, we cannot give certain assurance we would always stop development in the event of a breach. Enforcement action would be taken in a proportionate manner to the breach and in line with our standard policies and procedures. Finally, councillor Fox has queried how section one oh six money is to be spent, and why the Ward Councilors and the neighbourhood council have not been consulted regarding the decisions about the contributions sought. The contributions which are set out in the main committee report and the update report relate to planning policy matters, in this instance, public open space and tree mitigation. The council's public open space officer has advised which areas of open space would be subject to most demand from the development, and it is these locations where the monies would be spent. In terms of replacement tree planting, officers would be happy to liaise with the Ward Councilors and neighbourhood council as to where is best for those trees to be planted. There are no other financial contributions which the development must provide for. The development is exempt from the council's community infrastructure levy owing to it being a hundred percent affordable. So to conclude Chair, taking all of the matters into consideration, officers are of the view that on balance, the benefits arising from the proposed development would outweigh the harm caused. As such, our recommendation to you today is one of approval, subject to the conditions set out within the main committee report and the signing of a section one oh six legal agreement for the financial contributions which are set out in the committee report and the briefing update report. Thank you.
Thank you very much Louise. Okay, we have three different sets of speakers today. Firstly, I'll call councillor John Fox, councillor Judy Fox, and councillor Stephen Lane. Already in position, I see. Welcome to committee. I'm sure you know you'll have ten minutes between you to address committee when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. We would all like to express our concerns about the short notification that Ward Councilors and residents had to prepare for this meeting. Along with our concerns that no organised site visit was carried out, which we believe is imperative in this case, we would therefore ask that the committee gives consideration to our concerns, and if you feel in mind to do so, you defer this application to the next full planning meeting. This is the biggest planning application involving the residents of Warrington for many years, and you'll see by the number of objections, it's a very motive issue. I will start by saying that it is very noticeable that there are no known buildings in New Warrington that are above two stories high, and a proposal of three-story high flats would not be conducive to the area. It would equally totally look out of character to surrounding residential houses by failing to respect the now visual character of this well-established urban area. The plans involve such a large area, it will be detrimental to the whole unique environmental layout that already exists in this area, and gives no positive environmental gain. One of my main concerns is the loss of the bus terminal, that was built in the way for a very good reason, which was to serve bus routes coming from both directions, and facilitate for any increase of public transport improvements, bringing about a much greener environment and complying with our local transport plan to get more people on public transport. At the moment, the very busy Route one runs every ten minutes during the day from one direction, and Route sixty-two runs from the opposite direction, serving the rural communities linking into Warrington Centre and beyond. The terminal gives drivers a place not only to turn round, but to wait up for customers if the driver arrives ahead of his allocated time slot. In the winter months, they will wait up idling their engines to keep the coach warm, which is no problem at the moment as they are far enough away from residential housing, making the impact on noise pollution and air quality much less. But if it's moved to where they plan to move it, it will have a much more effect on residential houses. I have concerns that only one bus stop is planned, and I'm also concerned about the proximity of the bus stops being so close to the roads when being used by local school students and the elderly alike. Users of Route sixty-two may have to cross the road, but there's no plans to put any provision to cover this such as controlled crossings. I'm also very concerned about the police's response stating historically the local centre was used for drug dealing, hiding drugs, and antisocial behaviour, yet asked for the proposed pocket park centre to be removed, as they felt it could increase the crime and antisocial behaviour. I refer to paragraph from Government and National Design Guidelines. Well-designed public and shared amenity spaces feel safe for people who occupy the buildings around them, and also for visitors and passersby. They help to overcome crime and the fear of crime. Careful planning and design create the right conditions for people to feel safe and secure without the need for additional security measures. I am concerned that placing the two more shop units near to the far end of the centre may well have a more adverse and detrimental effect on crime and antisocial behaviour than already is there. I would also like to refer to another quote from the same document. Prioritising pedestrians and cyclists means creating routes that are safe, direct, convenient, and accessible for people of all abilities. In my opinion, this application is taken away from what is already there, and if this application is approved, the area will lose several open access points into the shopping centre for both pedestrians and cyclists alike. This will have an adverse effect on the present environmental landscape, and will, in my opinion, not be seen as a regeneration of the centre at all. I now hand over to councillor Lane.
Thank you John. Committee, I have two main points to raise. Firstly, with both new buildings being in such close proximity to the single-story aspect of Warrington District Centre, they would be unjustifiable, oversized, and incongruous. They do not contribute to inclusion and community cohesion, illustrated in the layout that blocks a customary route to the shopping centre along a footpath that was designed into the neighbourhood landscape by the Peterborough Development Corporation. And when you look at the purposeful symmetrical design through Ploughley and Crowhurst to the centre, it is an obvious direct route for residents, and has been for almost forty years. This new layout overrides and disrupts the local context in this manner, and I think it conflicts with policy LP sixteen of the Peterborough Local Plan. My second point is that highways, up until recently, have always objected to the application due to insufficient parking provision, insisting the development requires a hundred-and-two parking spaces. The applicant's argument to this says that local car use figures for flattered developments suggest a ratio of only naught-point-six-two parking spaces per flat, and asks for a variation of parking standards to be allowed. They claim their current proposal for seventy-five spaces should be sufficient and acceptable, but I beg to differ. This argument is somewhat debatable, because we should note that up until their latest comment, highways had stated that parking standards do not differentiate between flats or houses, nor private stroke affordable ownership. The parking provisions section of policy LP thirteen of the local plan actually states that, quote, "Planning permission for new development within the classes, the use classes, A, B, C, and D one will only be granted if the proposal makes appropriate and deliverable parking provision in accordance with a standard in appendix C", end quote. So I say this doesn't allow for any variation, otherwise what's the point of creating standards? And ask committee to consider why highways is now accepting what I believe to be an erroneous argument that really should be disregarded. It is inappropriate, and the development should still require a hundred-and-two spaces as previously stipulated. Now in closing, I just want to comment on the applicant's reason for overspill parking in neighbouring streets. Officers have already addressed Crowhurst and Ploughley, and acknowledged that it is at capacity, so it's been discounted from the parking beat survey. But traffic and parking in these streets is always dynamic and changing. A snapshot report from just two visits of a parking beat survey does not qualify any assessment of space availability. I can give this person a view having lived in the area for thirty-eight years, and safe parking provision has lately, especially lately, been inadequate. I cannot see where the free spaces they found in the survey has come from. In fact, pre-pandemic, I had been working with officers to seek a way to increase parking provision. So with no variation of standards allowed, it should follow that the case for overspill parking in surrounding streets should be deemed unnecessary and must be disregarded or at least prevented by condition. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I've got four areas to cover. First one is noise. Regarding the noise pollution, pollution's officers have concerns as to whether the proposed development would achieve satisfactory living conditions for future occupiers who might occupy units facing the service yard. In addition to this, the internal layout of the proposed development with bedrooms adjacent to the living rooms and communal areas will give rise to unacceptable levels of noise and disturbance when you have a number of business units which could be used twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as no planning conditions restrict this. There will be manoeuvring of vehicles, reversing beepers, forklifts, and more. In addition to this, there is the National Grid Electricity Substation, it's adjacent to the application site. Next one is waste. As Goodwin Walk cannot be used for refuse collections, vehicles would have to transfer their waste more than thirty metres to reach a communal bin store, and this is not set out in recap guidance. Future occupation of Unit one would have to carry their waste eighty-two metres to Block two, communal bin store, and many would have to transfer theirs well over maximum guidance. Council Waste Officer has objected to the proposal. Shop units, there are still empty units within the Warrington Centre, so why is there the need to put two more single-story shop units in this application when a previous similar application, eighteen oh oh six six seven F U L, was refused by the planning committee on the fourth of September two thousand and eighteen? And then after appeal, the inspector's decision was to dismiss this on the grounds of the effect of the proposal on the character and appearance of the area, and the effect of the proposal of public safety. This decision was made on the twenty-fifth of September two thousand and nineteen-
That's Tom, thank you.
-to dismiss the appeal. So my question is simply, what has changed with this application other than the location to the other side of the entrance to the centre?
Councillor Fox, that's Tom. Have you got one point quickly?
I've just got one about the trees. Is it okay to-
Yeah, go ahead.
It won't be long, and it's very important.
Go ahead.
Thank you. A tree officer is objecting to this proposal, saying that it is too large for its position and location on-site. It is too close to the footpath PCC Street Ts and highways, and in landscape terms, it would dominate the street scene despite the tree-lined avenue. The officer considers there will be an obvious issue with regards to the close proximity of the proposed development and the existing street trees as they mature and reach their full growth potential, which seems to have been downplayed within the application. The proposed buildings with balconies could affect the future management and pruning of the trees significantly rather than the statement within the planning application which reads, "In due course, the crown of the trees of Goodwin Walk may need to be pruned to keep them clear of the buildings." All this does not comply with LP twenty-nine, and it clearly does not offer any amenity space or grass open space lost by the removal of the fairly large public open space adjacent to Goodwin Walk. So with this in mind, there would be nowhere for the children to play or residents to sit outside due to the lack of open space, which in my opinion is not what a new build should take away from the public. It should, in my opinion, enhance green space and provide for residents on-site and not at long distances from the properties.
Councillor Fox, I think that's about-
Yeah, I've just got one about the biodiversity.
No, we're going to have to call it there, you're way over now.
Sorry.
I did give you extra time, so I think we'll have to call it at that.
No, that's all right.
All right, thank you.
Oh, you took too long to-
Okay. Just for everybody's benefit, obviously when it comes to the, this will be the agent, they'll have two minutes extra added if they need it onto their time to make it fair. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much councillors for your contribution. Members, have any questions please? Councillor Holm.
Councillor Fox, I wondered if you have an opinion about the biodiversity of the area at all?
Yes, that was just my ending up. It's with the biodiversity net gain two thousand and twenty-three possibly coming into force soon, we need to know that we have an approach to development that leaves biodiversity in a better state than before work is carried out, and in my strong opinion, this most definitely does not do this. That was all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Councillor Brown, first question.
Can I mention about the one oh six money?
It's questions to councillors, it's not anything to answer.
Can I bring it in later?
Yeah, you can bring that in later then. Do you want to turn your mic off again councillor Brown? Anybody else got any questions? No. Councillors, thank you very much. Okay, if I could call Sally Wield please. Good afternoon.
Hello.
You also are allowed an extra two minutes if you should wish, but you normally have five, so it's up to you. So as soon as you start, you have five plus an extra two if you require it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully I'll just take the five. I am the Secretary of Warrington Neighbourhood Council. Warrington Centre is at the core of our community. It contains our schools, a nursery, our shops, our doctors, and a dentist. It fulfils a major social and community purpose, but it is the greatest block within- Warrington. You've seen the plastic grass and the bare ground and the remains of the derelict toilet block. It makes for an unpleasant environment. Warrington residents deserve better, and this is why so many residents have given you their views and are also here today, right behind me. So there are still concerns and uncertainty. You have read the neighbourhood council's concerns within the report, and we would re-emphasise all those points again, and we also support all the comments made by the councillors. But the key issues remain. Why are three-storey flats being built where there's nothing else like it in the surrounding area? It will overwhelm the surrounding residential areas and the centre itself. The inspector's report from the twenty eighteen appeal, detailed in page thirty three of your reports, reflects on the character of the centre, and this new development has taken no notice of those points made by the inspector. Over one hundred and fifty people are being deposited in the middle of a tired and depressed shopping centre without any satisfactory open space, greenery and trees, in an area which is already designated as medium risk for antisocial behaviour. The original proposals provided benefit for the whole city and much-needed social housing, and benefits as well for the existing residents with the improvement of the sadly neglected centre. Many residents saw the proposals for the new landscaping as a key benefit of the development, but it was only in the last week that we found out that these plans have been withdrawn to the potential to enable antisocial behaviour. Clearly, but clearly the current landscape is equally not working. Residents are thus left with increased population density, loss of existing open and green space, increased demand in their services, but with no compensatory improvement in the communal facilities. We can see that compensation is being offered for elsewhere in Warrington, but does Cuckoo Hollow really need thirty thousand pounds worth of improvements five hundred metres up the road when the investment is needed here in the middle of the centre? What proposals can be produced to improve the current situation, which already itself encourages antisocial behaviour? Finally, Warrington is distant from the city centre and the employment areas. For shift workers, a car is the only form of transport. The over sixes are the highest category of car owners. Looking back, say, twenty years, you can see that car ownership expectations has increased with the lower wage earners. What's it going to be like in the future for us? With half the flats having two bedrooms and also taking into account work, transport, there could easily be two or more vehicles per flat. As it's noted, Warrington Centre Car Park is privately owned, full of antisocial behaviour, and likely to have parking restrictions in the future. There are many key times when it's full, such as the Sunday morning football. So the question about the removal of the city council parking standards is therefore key and needs careful consideration. It's very confusing, given the transport report only became available to us three weeks ago, and the recommendations even now seem to be constantly changing. All that I can say is that with the grid road network, Crowhurst is the only local road immediately accessible. The other roads mentioned, such as Scater's Way, are over kilometres drive away, so any overflow parking will be concentrated on that one street. This road, along with others in the areas already suffering from parking problems with the narrow access, winding roads and just too many residents' cars. Why are residents expected to have overflow cars from this development part down their street, causing pressure on their already problematic parking? You can see from the comments made that the proposal to overturn the parking standards just needs to be carefully considered, as this risks adding problems to the surrounding residential areas. It's very real. With this new info, it all just feels a bit horrid and feels a mess and is not being given proper consideration. The parking report is already creating doubts with officers when Crowhurst and Plovely is being mentioned. A proper parking review and consultation to ensure that our residents do not have their parking amenity removed is essential. Whilst we appreciate the need for affordable housing and the site's redevelopment to assist in the rejuvenation of the adjacent centre, our concerns still remain strong. We were therefore asked the committee to take the concerns being raised by our residents very seriously, especially with such a huge response. Consider if there has been appropriate time for a proper consideration, given the late arrival of the transport report and the removal of the pocket park from the plans. Ensure that the impact of the relaxation of parking standards is fully understood, especially in relation to the surrounding areas, and given the removal of the pocket park landscaping improvements must be ensured to give the centre, to give relief to this high-density accommodation and this compensation for loss of amenity for its current residents. Thank you very much for listening.
Sorry, thank you very much. Members, do you have any questions, please? Anybody? Yes, Counselor Hiller.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and through you. Just a simple question. Can you honestly think of anything good about this scheme? Please be candid.
Sure, it addresses the city council's demand for low-cost housing. It brings a new community to Warrington, but it's just the wrong size of building in the, just in the wrong place, and we're just not getting the appropriate offset benefits that will enable us to feel better about this development.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you very much. Kate Wood, then, please.
Welcome to the committee. You'll have seven minutes, if you need them, to address committee.
Thank you, Chairman, and also thank you to Louise Simmons for that very comprehensive presentation at the beginning there. I hope members were able to take the opportunity to visit the site despite the cancellation of the official site visit over the weekend. You'll have seen that most of the site comprises two areas. One is the vacant land, where Stanley Land Court Office Building has been demolished, and then along with the bus turnaround area. The bus stop is to be moved south along Goodwin Walk, where it will sit at the end of a widened walking route to and from the centre. Stagecoach hasn't objected to that new location, and we've negotiated that route as part of the process of the application. The site lies at the edge of the commercial centre of Warrington, and it's therefore in design terms a transition between commercial and residential areas. The design of the main blocks facing onto Goodwin Walk contrasts with the commercial buildings deliberately, because it's not a commercial use being proposed. Even so, it's lower in height than the office building at Olympus House, despite being three stories. We've worked with officers for several years on this scheme, including at pre-application stage, when the initial proposal was for a taller building with ninety two flats. This has now been reduced over time to fifty nine, following the submission of the planning application in August two thousand and twenty, eighteen months ago. At one hundred percent affordable, the application represents a unique opportunity to make up part of a significant shortfall in the city area. The applicant sent a letter to all committee members last week, which is at Appendix B of your supplementary agenda. This sets out how we've responded to initial objections, in particular setting the buildings back further from the trees on Goodwin Walk and widening the route between the centre and the bus stop. Other aspects of the proposal are two new shops and the addition of CCTV and lighting. You'll be aware from that Appendix B letter that the shops are now all let. Parking and access have been resolved with your highway officers. Parking is provided at one space per flat, plus twenty five percent for visitors. Officers have agreed that this is appropriate, given that the development is all one and two-bed units, and that some of these will be reserved for the over fifty fives. Our transport consultant has carried out additional survey work at the request of your highway officers, and there is capacity to accommodate the traffic. There is no requirement for any overspill parking, and certainly no need to park as far away as Crowhurst and Plovely. Even so, officers have required that the Section one oh six agreement includes provision to make traffic regulation orders if it transpires that overspill parking does occur, so that's covered. I therefore, I was just going to say about the public open space and the pocket park. We haven't removed the pocket park from the plans. We've been asked to, and we've said at this stage we'll leave that in for your consideration as to whether we should keep that or remove it as requested by the police. Despite the loss of a small amount of public open space, the officers have negotiated significant Section one oh six agreements towards works on existing open spaces, the allotments, et cetera. I therefore commend the application to you in accordance with the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions, please? Counselor Hiller and Counselor Holb.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. What consultation have you organised and been involved with regard to the Ward councillors, Warrington neighbourhood councillors, council and residents generally?
Well, this was, a lot of this took place before I became, before I took this job by my predecessor, John Daj. But our, the applicant and, well, basically, the applicant has secured Athene Communications to carry out a major consultation exercise, I guess it was a few years ago now, in Warrington Centre itself. That's all been set out in your application documents. There was significant consultation, and those responses led to the application that came in in August two thousand and twenty, with that significant reduction in height and reduction in numbers of units. Now, also, around August two thousand and twenty, my predecessor and I met with the local councillors and also with the neighbourhood council representatives at our offices, talked through the scheme with them. We've also had a little tour of the district centre with two of those councillors as well. So we've, and obviously have kept people informed, kept them informed and local residents informed throughout the pre-application and application process.
Thank you for that. It appears the consultations weren't particularly effective, given that we've just listened to both the Ward councillors and Warrington neighbourhood councillor, who are dead-set against this application, not just on one or two points, but a litany of reasons why they feel it is inappropriate, not least of which is the character change for the area, the massing of the buildings, bins, parking. I mean, what was the actual, what do you feel was the value of the consultation process that you had with the affected parties?
The value is absolutely significant. This is going to be a major development within Warrington, as the councillors themselves have pointed out to you today. The, there is a need for affordable housing. This is an opportunity that's been taken by the applicant, and the applicant comprises of kind of two businesses working together, one of which is funding affordable homes, a housing association, and this is an opportunity to provide affordable housing. Yes, the applicant could have come forward with something completely different, but actually, you know, everyone involved in this really believes that this is an appropriate scheme for this location. Now, in terms of being one hundred percent affordable housing, that has to stack up financially anyway. There is, there is a grant available to support that from various, you know, the combined authority, from Homes England, et cetera. And so that, so that opportunity is there. But at the end of the day, that's still got to pay for itself. It's still got to cover the Section one oh six agreement costs for the additional landscaping works, et cetera. So it's not a situation where it's okay just to propose, say, fifty affordable housing, affordable homes, and expect that to stack up. So it's got to be a viable scheme.
Okay. Counselor Holb?
I just wanted to clarify, is there any provision for E V charging in the car park at all?
I can't actually remember, however, perfectly happy to accept a condition to that effect.
Perhaps a question to officers, Counselor Holb. Counselor Rush?
Thank you. Could you just clarify something you said in your address? Did you say that there would be no need for any of the new residents to park on the streets or in the private car park?
Yes, I did say that. That was part of the negotiations that have been taking place over time with your highway officers. The evidence that has come from the highway officers' requirements for us to carry out further surveys would suggest that there is sufficient parking and we shouldn't be needing to have overspill parking. But what they've done is suggested that if for some reason that's wrong, and there will be overspill parking, then there's a mechanism to deal with that. And hopefully, your highway officer will clarify that for you in the main debate.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? Counselor Hussein?
Couple of things. Firstly, in regards to parking, the officer in their address mentioned a deficiency of twenty seven parking spaces. In your address, you mentioned that there was one parking space per flat and an additional, was it twenty five, you said? So I'm just, how many total parking spaces are there?
Seventy five, I think it is, or seventy four. So it's one per, oh, yes, it's seventy five. So it's one per unit plus twenty six, isn't it? So it's one per unit plus twenty five. The council standard is based on numbers per unit, which is why if you use the standards, then obviously there's a deficiency against the standard. But obviously, what's been negotiated over time with your highway officers is a realistic approach. So you've got small units, they're affordable units, some of them are for older people as well, and so because of that, you've got, the work that's been done and the calculations and surveys that have been done have worked out a more realistic likelihood of parking that would come from the development.
Sorry, also, so going on from that, the bus turning area at the moment, so that's been removed, and there's, I mean, C eighteen, there was a mention of a temporary bus station, but there's no provision of a bus turning area at the moment in that development?
No, there isn't. So Goodwin Walk is a bus-only, as Louise Simmons said, it's a bus-only road, so it's not a hugely busy road that people can't cross. Buses will still be able to access the bus stop, but they'll have to take a different way to do that. I understand that Stagecoach were consulted, and I don't think they've raised any concerns about that at all. They'll accommodate it within their routing systems.
Leads on to another question. So with the issues with the parking, you know, the bus stop, et cetera, I'm guessing with the development, the officers or, you know, we've been planning, the hope is that people will probably look towards using more of the public transport, but from the application at the moment, what I see is, you know, if you're hoping for people to use public transport and have less cars, but at the same time you're taking away certain provision, would that then not make it more difficult for them, do you think? And then obviously make them inclined towards using cars rather than public transport?
It would if we were taking away public transport opportunities, but we're not. So the bus stop is simply moving, it's just moving along. The bus stop will still be there, and you'll have seen from the presentation that Louise Simmons did, that there's, the bus stop is set in a kind of paved area at the end of the walkway from the centre. So it's well-related to the centre for people to get off, go into the centre or go out to their properties from there. It's a proper bus shelter, so it's not as if we're taking away the opportunity for people. I'm assuming that there'll be a condition requiring a travel plan as well, which will encourage new residents to use public transport and walk and cycle where possible, obviously being a sustainable location anyway.
Sorry, Chair.
Carry on.
Just, you mentioned the travel plan. I don't know if this is something I need to talk to the officers about or, you know, mention- know, mention to you, but as you've mentioned it just now. C28, when it says about the travel plan, it said about once there's 50% occupation of the flats, that's when the travel plan will be submitted. In your mind, isn't, shouldn't the travel plan be submitted before residents go into the apartments? Isn't it too late once they're already in there?
Yes, it is. I think it should be sooner than that. I agree with you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Jones?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Fox, Judy Fox, mentioning about people dragging bins here, there and everywhere. I read in the revised report about access through the service yard. Does it, can you assuage their fears that people will be able to get the bins to a suitable location within limits, particularly if older people are doing that?
Yes, at the moment there are several bin stores around the site that have been proposed. But one of the conditions, I understand, is that, that we've been asked to make some changes to that so that, so that that issue can be addressed and that people won't have to drag them so far. So there is a condition, I think, requiring, I don't know which condition it is, sorry, which requires us to provide some changes to the bin storage points. So people are dragging their bins to the bin storage and then the collection is by the private collection company like Biffa, those kind of people, Violia, would come in and collect it. The access route is through the service yard. But obviously people haven't got to drag their bins around the service yard at all now.
So are you confident then, because it seems like it's a bit retrofitted, that the concerns they have now you're going to address in the future? And I'm just, you know, a little bit like councillor was saying before, is it's a little bit stable door stuff. How are you going to address that so that, and again, one of the key concerns of councillor John Fox was the fact that there hasn't been an awful lot of time, you know, sort of for us to assimilate the changes in the report. So can you give them, me the comfort and them the confidence that, and is it going to be a private company or is it going to be done by arrogance? So they, they will have to be done and is that cost being passed on to the residents or the council? How will that be paid for?
I'm not sure what the service charge arrangements are going to be, but I understand it is going to be a management company that, well, because it's, because it's an affordable housing provider, that they will run the site. So it's up to them how they choose to arrange for bin collections. Like you, we've had the agenda for a week as well and so we haven't had the time since last week to go back to our architect and say, right, we need to amend the plans for this purpose, which is why there's a condition saying we need to make some changes to the plans for the bin stores. My reassurance on that point would be that until we have agreed those changes to the bin storage requirements, we won't be allowed to commence development.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions to officers? Councillor Hogg?
Just the same question I asked just now. Is there any provision for EV charging at all in the development?
Thank you, through you Chair. Condition 25, which is set out in the main committee report, seeks to secure EV charging points which will serve the development. For the avoidance of doubt, 5% of the bays must be EV bays.
Okay. So councillor Hogg, can you carry on?
Yeah, I'm just, so 5% with cars, basically new cars, is it, from 2030 or 2040 going over to electric, is 5% really going to be sufficient? You know, the fact that we're, you know, this is being new built, as it were, surely even if you're not putting in the actual charges themselves, that the wiring, so that more charges can be put in over time, should be something that we should be looking at going forward for any, any development of this nature.
Thank you and through you Chair. Obviously we are, we have to adhere to the adopted planning policies. I'm certainly happy if members would like post resolution to seek with the applicant their agreement to put in more EV bays, or you may choose to amend the condition as you see fit through, through any proposal that you may wish to make.
Okay, I've got councillor Dowson first. Could you use your mic? Sorry councillor Dowson, please.
We've had the views of the citizens of the area against the proposition. I'm wondering, the, I believe the civic society have expressed a view of opposition. I'm wondering, as it's their non-residents, what their position is? What is their main objections?
I'm sure Louise can answer that. It is in the report, but you can carry on if you wish.
The civic society have raised objections. Their main concerns are relating to height, massing, scale of the development. It is set out in the main committee report. I think, I believe their comments have provided verbatim actually. So it is all set out in the main committee report, but they're the, the highlights as to their main concerns.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Rush? Was it, I saw both hands go up, so I don't mind. Councillor Hiller then? Councillor Hiller then, Rush?
It's very kind of you councillor Rush, thank you. Oh, did I? Alright. Highways, we appear to be moving on the requirement for our normal parking facilities for this type of development, so the amount of development. Can you just explain to me why you feel that it is acceptable to have perhaps less parking spaces than we would normally insist upon? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hiller and through you Chair. I think it's important just to point out that PCC parking standards do not differentiate between different houses and different types of flat tenure. And the applicant has provided sort of robust and comprehensive evidence to demonstrate the onsite parking provision is acceptable. And this evidence has been provided in the way of census data. And so census data looks at, provides data of flats and car ownership levels within flats across the country and around Peterborough and around the Peterborough area. And the applicant has also provided survey data of similar flatted developments around the Peterborough area that also, that are consistent with the census data provided.
Yeah, thank you for that. So you've said that we, as a local highways authority, we don't, highways officers don't differentiate between the different tenures of property and yet an applicant presents a report which counteracts that and you're quite happy with that and you accept that and you exceed to a lower parking requirement? Is that how I understand it?
That's correct, councillor Hiller.
Councillor Rush?
Thank you Chair. The PC officer mentioned that the proximity of the proposed building to the avenue, to PC Avenue trees, considering of the, what we've got ongoing now with the tree in Bretham, would you think that this, this development is too close to the trees on, I think it's Goodwin Walk?
Through you Chair. The concerns of the tree officer have been noted. The applicant did move the development further away from those trees through revisions and planning officers on balance feel that there is sufficient breathing room now to prevent undue pressure on those trees.
Yeah, carry on.
Question for the highways officer. In her address, the agent says that all parking could be accommodated on the site and that there would be no need to park on the side streets or in the private car park. Would you agree with that?
Thank you councillor Rush and through you Chair. As I've already explained to councillor Hiller, the parking evidence provided demonstrates the onsite parking provision is adequate for the development and there should be no need for any off-site parking. The purpose of the exercise for, to, the purpose of the requested parking beat survey and the supermarket, supermarket car park survey was to provide reassurance, should there be any overspill, that that wasn't going to result in any unacceptable impact across the highway network and that evidence provided does that.
Councillor Hogg?
Thank you Chair and through you. Again, a question for the highways officer. It was intimated that if there was a problem with overspill parking, that there was a solution kind of in the back pocket, as it were, in terms of TRO, presumably that means double yellow lines to prevent that from happening. I know that there was a particular problem on Hawkesbury Way with a lot of on-street parking where there was TRO put in place and it meant that those cars suddenly disappeared off the street and went into the provided parking underneath the building, which I think the trouble was that there were people that were using the on-street parking rather than actually using, going into the garage underneath. Is that essentially what's been said here?
I'm going to pick that one up if that's okay councillor Hogg. So the local highway authority has suggested that as a fail-safe, that TROs be secured or monies for TROs be secured if there is overflow parking later down the line. However, as set out on page 41 of the committee report, officers don't feel that that would actually meet the tests that contributions must meet in terms of being secured under the Town and Country Planning Act. So a TRO requires consultation in its own right, so it's not dead cert, so to speak. It may not happen. Because there is that potential for it not to actually happen, we don't feel that there is the legal mechanism for us to secure those monies through the Town and Country Planning Act, i.e. in a Section 106 legal agreement. In addition, the local highway authority have been very clear in their comments to us that they feel that the parking provision, based on the evidence submitted, is sufficient and that there would not be overflow parking onto the highway. As such, the contribution for a TRO is not necessary to make the development acceptable and therefore could not be secured. Therefore, officers are not proposing that that forms part of the Section 106.
Yeah, councillor Brown? Bring what you like?
I received a letter dated the 18th of February from Adrian Hayes, Funding Affordable Homes. It stated that as an agreement concerning 106 funds had been agreed, this was a financial contribution to relation to the landscape. This will enclose Cookoo's, include Cookoo's Hollow upgrading, existing play areas and allotments in Warrington. Also contributions towards planting of replacement trees and their maintenance. When new developments took place in my ward of Eythornie and Uber, I was informed that all 106 monies were to be placed in a central pot and this was distributed to all wards in the area. Why has an agreement been made for this 106 money to go direct to this application in Warrington or is this not the case?
Thank you and through you Chair. Most infrastructure contributions in Peterborough are dealt with through the council's community infrastructure levy, which pools monies for use for certain aspects and it's all set out in our community infrastructure levy and the SPD that goes with that. There are certain elements relating to infrastructure contributions that are not included in the SIL, which includes things like affordable housing, public open space and any other site specific matters that need to be secured through a financial contribution. So in this instance, policy LP21 relates to new developments providing public open space, as none is provided on the site, an off-site contribution is instead secured. The council's public open space officer has made recommendations as to where those monies should be spent based upon where the greatest demand would be as a result of the people moving into these homes. Members may disagree on that and you may wish to secure financial contributions for alternative public open space provision. The tree mitigation is another specific mitigation. It's a policy requirement under LP29 and therefore we've secured a specific pot of money based on a quote for 49 replacement trees. Beyond that, there are no specific, site-specific financial contributions that the development triggers and there wouldn't be anything that needs to be pooled to be spent.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I've got a couple. I'm going to go back to highways first. You're assuring everybody that there's enough parking onsite effectively, that's your stance? Yep? You mentioned the Tesco public car park, which really has to be taken out of this equation, doesn't it? Because that could be chargeable overnight. That's, that's a private car park, isn't it? So we shouldn't, we shouldn't assume that people can overflow into that car park in any way. You agree?
Currently it has no parking restrictions, so there are, there's unfettered arrangements there at this moment in time. But you're quite right, the development cannot be reliant on that as a car park.
Right. Now going on from that, if you're, if you're convinced, this is my, you know, just a question really, if you're convinced that the parking is sufficient, that's onsite, why have we even looked at TRO? Why have we looked at, if it overflows, why are we even thinking down those lines if we're convinced there's enough car parking?
Because in the service yard, there was a number of displaced parking spaces which the Tesco car park will be expected to cater for. And it's, I believe the parking spaces in the service yard are mainly used by Tesco staff at this moment in time and the purpose of that exercise was to demonstrate that there was adequate parking provision for that loss.
Right. So you think that it's the people who park in the Tesco service yard that are more likely to park in surrounding streets, not the people in the development? Well, you can't guarantee that, but that's where you're coming from, is it?
Correct. The, yes.
Okay, fair enough. Then I'm going to go on to more probably, let you have a little rest, go on to Louise's amenity worries me. We've got probably a hundred odd people in these flats and they've got nowhere to go effectively. They're going to have to walk, I guess, 500 yards, 1000 yards maybe, to get to a parking area, a park area. Are you, are you convinced, or officers convinced that the amenity, they haven't got any effectively, that that's acceptable for that amount of people to be in that area with nowhere to go? If they wanted to go, like most of us, sit in the back garden or sit out in a communal area, there isn't anything really for them to go to.
Yeah, thank you Chair. In short, yes, officers are content. Would it be ideal if each occupier had a communal space in which to dry clothes or to sit and relax? Yes, yes it would. This site is not of a sufficient size to be able to do that, to provide all of the necessary accommodation plus parking. And officers feel that the proximity of the park to the west is sufficient to provide occupants of the flats with a sufficient space in which they can go to have an outside space.
Yeah, I'm coming from really, I guess, in the last two years, it's become particularly evident that open space is very good for us from a mental point of view, a mental health point of view and a physical health point of view. So I'm only labouring the point that if that's all been taken into account, fine. I don't think there's a lot more I can say, but it's not really a question. I'll, I'll stop it there because I'm only labouring the point, so. Anybody else? Councillor Hiller?
Yeah, thank you Chair and through you. I was listening very closely to our highways officer justifying, justifying why they've reduced their requirement for the normal parking spaces that would be applicable for this development. And it appears the applicant has written a report, our highways officers have accepted that report and reduced the number accordingly. We've also heard from our other planning officers that introduced the item in the first place, that there's no TROs money available because it's not. place, that there's no TROs money available, because it's not a part of a 106 arrangement. So, TROs, traffic regulation orders aren't going to be implemented should there be far more cars than are originally envisaged, which in fairness, I think is most likely, I think it's probable, one of the, one of the main issues.
Sorry, councillor Hiller, I do hate to stop you, but we're in questions.
Yeah, there is a question, Chair. No, that's, that's good of you to remind me. My question is, are we, how, do we sit comfortably with that recommendation, that the, the numbers of spaces being provided and accepted by our highways team is actually going to be sufficient? Are we comfortable with that?
Yes, I am comfortable with the evidence that's been provided.
That's it. Thank you. Yes, Louise, if you want to come back on something, yeah?
Thank you, Chair. It was just in relation to the TROs, so notwithstanding the position that officers have, members could, should they wish to, secure a pot of money that may be used potentially for TROs, and if unspent, it then is returned to the applicant within a period of ten years. Officers are uneasy with that. We're not entirely convinced that meets all the tests, but members may choose to, to secure that through, through their proposal.
Thank you for that, if I might. That's very reassuring, thank you. Our highways officer is comfortable with the amount of spaces, but you want a contingency just in case. Yes?
Planning officers don't, however, the local highway authority does.
Councillor Hogg. Without trying to put you into a corner, what kind of figure are you talking about for that contingency?
About five thousand pounds would cover the public consultation exercise and the implementation of a distance of double yellow lines, say, along Stanley Landway.
Any further questions to officers? Councillor Say.
So, I just wanted to, I know we've heard mention of affordable housing, I just want to know whether these properties were for sale, or how many of these units would be for, say, social housing or for sale.
Thank you, through you, Chair. They're all proposed for affordable rented tenure, all a hundred percent of them.
Councillor Say. All right?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Right, no further questions then, so we'll go to debate. Who would like to start debate on this? Oh. Can I urge you to, somebody kick off, because this is very important, affects a lot of people's lives, so can somebody start, start us running, please? Councillor Jones, please.
Thank you, Chair. When I read this report, and in some detail, I read it with a great deal of alarm that I can relate to with the Warrington councillors. What I, and notwithstanding whatever development is actually being, whether affordable houses, whether they're, whether they're luxury flats or whatever, one of the things that I, I did was looked at it, and I suppose I looked at it as what was, people have lived there a long time, what is and what will be. And one of the things I'm just mindful of here is two things. Number one, the officers seem very calm and confident that they, it meets the planning requirements, and I think sometimes we've just got to look at it from that point of view. I share a number of the points of the disquiet, and I, you know, from the agent, I noticed a little bit of what I call retrofitting to the application, but generally speaking, if we're looking at it as a planning, as a planning application, is it, it ticks the boxes, and I read it, and I reread it to make sure that it does for me. And as they say, on balance, I'm minded to go with this application. I understand and I share a lot of the concerns. What would I do in my ward? Because this is something I've always mindful of, and I'm also mindful of the fact, could I actually live there? And again, on balance, I think the answer is yes, and I don't know what the future holds. All I can say is, as at now, just it shades it for me that I would be tempted to go with officer recommendations and grant it, because again, from the pictures, it doesn't look as out of kilter as the councillors have said, and certainly the civic society seemed to bring in, and it doesn't look as bad as I thought it would do, given that these are graphics, and I know the, the area reasonably well. I'm just sorry, I wasn't able to go there last week in the high winds. Thank you.
Next. Councillor Hogg.
So, I find myself in a very difficult position, because I, I think that the, the fact that this, this is a hundred percent social housing for rent, something that, that we all know, is, is something that's, you know, very much needed within our city, and it's not a small development in that space, and so it would make a considerable contribution in, in reducing the, the burden on our housing list. I, I think in terms of the fact that it is a hundred percent affordable rent, it does mean that there's probably less of a, a need for, for car parking than if it had been, you know, privately bought flats going forward, for whatever reason, but, you know, I, I'm just thinking of my, my experience of car kind of ownership in, in my ward with, with a similar, you know, kind of block of flats, and the amount of car spaces that are unutilized within that development. So, I'm slightly at ease with, with the, with the car parking situation, and that, you know, the fact that our local plan doesn't differentiate between types of building to do, you know, does, I can see that there, it does need to be looked at in a slightly different way. That said, you know, there's been considerable objection from, from the community. All three ward councillors have made very strong representations in, in a number of different aspects to, to this, and I think it would be wrong for us not to listen to that kind of weight of, of public opinion. We are here to serve our community, after all, and so, you know, I, I'm, when I first looked at the, the proposal, I thought to myself, you know, this is a great development, and, you know, would, you know, I was kind of leaning towards approval, but I have to say that after the, the addresses of coming from, from the ward councillors, and, and kind of reading, you know, the, the kind of, the, the number of people that are objecting to this, I have to say I'm kind of going the other way. So, that's currently my, my position, but I'm, as always, I'm still open to hear what other members have to say, and what their opinions are regarding what we've heard today. So, I'm still movable, as they say.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hogg. Councillor Hussain.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so originally, originally looking at this development, and reading the papers, I thought it was a bit of overkill. I was concerned about the size, parking, you know, bus routes, et cetera, and also obviously listening to the councillors in the ward. The one thing I would say is, Peterborough does have a big need for social housing and affordable housing, and I know that from personal experience, talking to people and residents within our wards as well. It's a daily occurrence where you get people looking and asking, you know, they need accommodation. So, that sometimes, for me, outweighs other things, but at the same time, to try and improve the lives of some people by getting them into housing doesn't mean that you should, you know, deter or, sorry, take away from people that already live there. Common sense would say to me that what I would hope for is rather than, you know, the section 106 landscaping being spent elsewhere, and I think one of the people addressed it who represents the, the area is, I would probably prefer to see that being spent within that locality, within, you know, the, the centre itself and around that area. So, as, as they said, you know, that they are, you know, compensated for the loss of amenity within that area. So, if that was done, then I'd probably go for it, if that was put in as a condition that that money was spent within Warrington Centre. The other thing was about the, the travel plan. I think they, you know, that should be put in place or looked at before anyone moves in, or even the site is probably developed, you know, to, to have an idea of what the impact of that will be on residents locally, because you don't want to improve this, like I said, you don't improve the lives of some people by taking away comfort of other people. So, if we can balance that in that way, then I, then I'd probably go for it.
Who else would like to speak? Councillor Rush.
Thank you, Chair. I think we all, we all know that there is a need for social housing, social housing, but to me, this application is out of character within the area. I still have concerns about the parking. In the report, there's been big plays on, about the parking of overspill being able to go on Goodwin Walk and the private home car park, and now we're being told that there's no need for that, because there'll be enough parking within the, within the site. So, I still minded to go against officers' recommendation and refuse this application.
Thank you, councillor Hiller.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Similarly, I, I do have concerns over the parking provision. Similarly, I do have concerns over the size of these flatted developments. Similarly, I do have concerns over the design and the redesign of this particular part of Warrington. It's a difficult one, it is a difficult one, and I share councillor Hogg's consternation about the, the approval or indeed refusal of this particular application. I am in a difficult position, which is unusual for me, because I normally have fairly clear ideas about these developments. I listened with passion, sorry, the address, the passionate address of, of the ward councillors and the Warrington neighbourhood council. We cannot ignore the sheer volume of objection against this development, and we need to counter that, as, as has already been said, I think councillor Hussain, we, we need to counter that against the need, the desperate need in this city for affordable accommodation. It's a difficult one. I think, yes, we do need affordable accommodation in this city, but at what cost? And I think we need to be very conscious that we could perhaps still have affordable accommodation on this development, but something that has less impact on the residents that already live here. And I'm, look to the councillors Lane and councillors Fox and Fox, because they do know this area intimately, and they know what fits, and they know what doesn't fit, and they've come out very, very strongly, Chair, against this application. So, I have to say, I am minded to go against officers' recommendation at this stage.
Thank you, councillor Hiller. Anybody else? Councillor Brown, please.
Yeah, I'm an ex-councillor of Warrington. I was city councillor for a few years there, and there's two apartment blocks called flats in that centre which are aggravation to the police and everybody in that area, and I don't think it's ever been sorted out, and I shall be voting against it. Thank you.
Councillor Bond.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a very difficult one, as has been echoed by the other members of the committee. I understand that we have a need for affordable housing, but I also obey the fact that it needs to be done in the right way, in the right place, and not negatively affect the residents that already live there. I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not convinced about the parking argument. I, I don't think there will be adequate spaces if everyone decides to have two cars in that flat. For me, the numbers just don't add up with the spaces. Also, the loss of amenity for local residents, and just the fact basically that the councillors and residents have done such a great job in representing the application, and so based on those, I think I'll be going against it, to be honest with you. Sorry.
Councillor, you want to come back?
Yeah, I, just something I just remembered, that councillor Fox had said within the body of his address about a site visit, and I'm just wondering if, as it was called off because of the storms that we had over the last weekend and Friday in particular, whether it might be, Chair, and that your discretion as to whether there, there is a vote held or otherwise, but whether a site visit would be useful, in which case this, this case could be deferred until the next committee meeting. Just saying that, just throwing it out there.
Councillor Jones.
I think I'd support that, and for the reason because councillor Fox, John Fox, actually made about delaying it, and if, I've, I've taken out the social housing aspect of it, I've just gone it down to a planning application, and I think that, given the impassioned views as, as has been expressed by the councillors, I'm more than happy to take those into, I've not, I've not taken the social element in, it's just purely a planning application, and if we can look at it both as that and in the wider context, then I'd certainly be supportive of that as well, if it were possible.
I'm very conscious of delaying something that, well, I need to know why you want to delay. Are you effectively saying that what you've seen and heard in the presentation, the photographs, that that's not enough for you to make your decision? Because unless I hear that, then I won't have a vote to go and have another look, because that's what you're saying. So, you need to assure me before I go to the vote, you feel you need to see that site physically with your eyes?
It wasn't actually me saying that, Chair, it was just, just reflecting on what councillor Fox said.
Gone to the room. I've gone to the room. So, councillor Bond.
Obviously, if members want to have a look at the site, then obviously, I'd join them for that and support it, but I would also say we have had a large, large number of residents who have come out who do know the site very well already, and if they've got these issues, I don't see why we, we, we need to, as just one kind of snapshot on a visit, would that really give us a better opinion about it than the residents who have lived there thirty, forty years, some of them? So, I, I don't know if a site visit would be of much benefit in this case, but happy to go if that's what the majority wants, obviously.
Okay, we've had both sides. So, is somebody wanting to propose that you, you basically defer this, and you go and have a site visit to help you make your mind up, or not? Sorry, yeah, councillor Rush.
I'll just say something, not, not making a proposal. I did visit the site yesterday by myself, and listened, listened to the, the passion of the councillors and the local Warrington neighbourhood, whatever, whatever it is. I still think, looking at the, when I visited, that that would still be out of character. You've had lots of photographs on the, on the screen showing, so I wouldn't be in favour at the moment going for a, a site visit. I would just like to get this, get this, the proposal either sorted today.
Okay, I'm going to put it clearly then. Is there anybody in the room who feels they cannot make the decision unless they do a site visit? Can't be any clearer than that. So, there's no vote? So, we're not intending to go back and have another site visit? So, we'll move on, carry on with the debate then, because we're going to make a decision then tonight. Thank you. Right, okay. Carry on with the debate? Anybody? Yes, councillor Hiller.
I have a proposal, Chair, when, if, when and if debate is finished.
Thank you for that. Anybody else wish to add to this debate? No? I think from my own personal point of view, I've asked the court, you can see where my feelings... feelings are by the questions I've asked, in that, um, I have trouble getting the car parking bit to add up, that there is sufficient, but just in case there isn't, I don't like that bit, I'm not sure about that. Um, either there is or there isn't, although the highways officers have now said there is, so I'm happy for you that you said that. You can't, as has been said, you can't take away the weight of opposition. You know, we have ward councillors, we're ward councillors and we're there for a reason, let's represent our wards and the three ward councillors have done that admirably today, um, and with passion, as councillor has said. Also, we've had the Warrington parish group in, uh, or neighbourhood group, and again, there's passion there. I don't, I find it just seems a bit big for me. It just feels to me a bit, a bit oversized. Um, affordable housing, as has been said, we do need, no doubt about that, and I'd like to see something like that happen. I think the issue at the moment is it's, it's just, there's too much, too big. The amenity, albeit the parks, I don't know exactly the yards, is it five hundred yards away? Um, I just feel that a hundred people in a, in a block of flats with nowhere to go. What's been going on the last two years just seems a little bit, um, locked up sort of feeling, you know? Not sure about that. But, as we said, there's, there needs to be affordable housing and, and that does carry a great weight with me. Um, but I think with the, the massing and the poor amenity, in my view, and the weight of the opposition and the amount of people that have written in to oppose this, I, I can't, I don't think I can support it. And if somebody's going to add more to debate, that triggers me. I am quite on the fence, but I'm having trouble with it at the moment. Councillor Jones.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing with anything that anybody said. There's always going to be a hearts and heads dilemma. I think for me, in this particular instance, is, um, and as was said over a previous planning application, I can't vote against it simply because I don't like it. Not all of it sits comfortably with me. I've tried to take the emotion of the social housing out of it and just looked at the application and having seen the, 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 the graphics is, I, you know, again, I just refer back to the fact that what the officers have done and with the help of the agent is that they can make it acceptable. It's never going to be top of the pops with anybody and everybody. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, sometimes with a heavy heart, I go with it. And if you factor in, it just makes it a little more compelling when you put the social housing aspect into it, for me certainly.
No, they're all good points, they're all good points. Anybody else wish to add to the debate? Okay, we're going to ask for a proposal then. I've got councillor Hiller, I'm just making sure nobody else is going to shoot their hand up. So councillor Hiller then, please. Do you have a proposal still?
Uh, yes, I do, Chair. Um, my proposal is, um, and I listened very closely to councillor Jones and other members, of course, and it seems to me that there are a, a majority of members perhaps, um, one or two exceptions, but a majority of members who are, um, fence sitters currently, which I admit to being a member of that club. Um, I've fallen on the side of the fence where I accept our officer's recommendation and would like to propose that we approve this application with the conditions that have been mooted, um, by our planning officer. I'm not comfortable with, with the parking recommendations, I really, really am not comfortable with that. And I completely get, um, the ward councillors' passionate address about this, particularly the massing and the car parking facilities, the potential for overspill. But I think on balance, Chair, um, and I think listening to you, um, give us your address a, a couple of minutes ago, I think on balance, um, I am minded to recommend that we accept the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Seconder, please. Councillor Hussein, beat you to it. All those in favour? Three? Against? Five, I see. Six? Can you put hands up again for against? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, councillor Nelson. Six, so no abstentions, is that correct? So I'm afraid that proposal has been defeated. So I'm seeking another proposal. Surely amongst those that said against, somebody has a proposal. You want me to do the proposal? Well, councillor Bond, you can have a proposal.
No, I was just going to say, I know what I want to object against, but I don't really know how to word it, if, if that makes sense, in terms of a planning perspective, if, if that comes across. So, uh, so basically, I, I'm not convinced by the parking. I, I don't think that's appropriate and there's not enough of it. And I'm not convinced by the loss of amenity. I, I think the current residents and the area will, will lose its lack of amenity through public space and the fact that there's no actual sort of green space or park provided more locally. So I don't know if you can phrase that into some form of proposal, anyone?
Well, it's, unfortunately, it's for you to do. Um, you'll have a chat with your colleague or something, you can by all means in a minute. Anybody got one, another ready one as to quote Boris on the table? Right? Well, I'll put one in then. Right, I propose that we, while taking into account, um, the accident report by officers, et cetera, that, you know, and, and understanding where they're coming from, um, the committee, um, effectively go against officer's recommendation on account of the massing, size of massing of the buildings, the character of the area and the effect on parking, not enough parking. And, sorry, I missed a bit, I did it as well, and the effect, the, the lack of amenity provision for those using the flats or housed in the flats, occupiers of the flats. That's mine. Anybody want to second that? Councillor Rush has seconded it. All those in favour? Six. Against? Two. Abstaining? One. Okay, so that proposal is agreed and the application is refused on those grounds. Do you need anything else from me? Or you've got mine? Perfect. So the application is refused, thank you very much. Right, we'll move on to the next one. Do you want to go straight or do you want a break now? Right, we're going to have a, a ten minute break, I think we've sat here quite a while. Um, twenty-five passed, please. Uh, but don't forget we're in live sessions, I don't, don't discuss the next ones on the agenda.
Okay, we're going to move on now then to item 5.2, which relates to Jubilee House, First Drift in Wethorp. This will be presented again by Louise Simmons when you're ready, please.
Thank you Chair, I'll just wait for Karen to pop the presentation up for you all. The application before you seeks construction of a part, sorry, we've got something going on that's not normal, apologies. Oh, okay. The application before you seeks construction of a part two storey and part first floor side front extension at Jubilee House in Wethorp. This slide shows the application site edged in red. It's located entirely within the village boundary of Wethorp and to the south of First Drift. Wethorp is a designated special character area and covered by policy LP 20, apologies. The site is backland dwelling sighted to the rear of Terracotta House and this was granted planning permission back in 2012. Thanks Karen. This is an aerial photograph of the application site with it again edged in orange. It shows the relationship of the sites to neighbouring dwellings which are all annotated. Terracotta House is to the north with Tarrance to the north east and Ark and Garth to the north west. Friarfield is the dwelling whose garden extends to the south of the application site and this includes a tennis court, swimming pool and landscaped garden. Thanks Karen. At present, the application dwelling is predominantly single storey albeit there is a lower ground floor and this is the existing floor plan. It's of unique contemporary design and while single storey in terms of accommodation, it does read as a one and a half storey dwelling in its appearance and these are the existing elevations of the property. Turning now to look at the photographs of the site, this shows the view of the site from First Drift. Terracotta House and Ark and Garth are in the foreground with the application site just visible to the rear. Vehicle access is shared between the application site and Terracotta House. Then panning round, this shows the context of the site along First Drift. You'll note that the dwellings are large, set in spacious plots and all of unique design. And this shows Ark and Garth with the application property visible to the rear. Moving into the site, this shows the relationship of the garden between Terracotta House and Jubilee House which is to the rear. And then turning round and looking back down the access towards Terracotta House and First Drift in the background. In the application site itself, this is the existing detached double garage which is sighted adjacent to the boundary with Terracotta House which is to the left of the photograph. The garden of Tarrance is to the rear of this garage. And this shows the principal elevation of the existing dwelling. This is the view from the principal elevation of the application property looking back towards Terracotta House and Ark and Garth on the left. And this is the view of the Terracotta House garden which is taken from the boundary fence. This photograph shows the rear elevation of the existing dwelling which faces south and members will note that there is a considerable ground level difference between the rear of the site which is considerably higher than the land on which the dwelling sits. This further shows the levels difference better with the southern boundaries to the left hand side of the photograph. And this shows the relationship of the application property to the west. The level change is notable with the dwelling being sunken compared to the neighbour. These photographs show the relationship of the application property to the eastern boundary with Tarrance. The left hand side is looking southwards and the right hand side photograph looking north. And this is the roof slope on the eastern elevation of the property with Tarrance to the right hand side of the photograph. Turning to look at the site from the neighbouring properties, this shows the view of the site and Terracotta House from the garden of Tarrance. And then moving further down, looking down the garden of Tarrance, you will note the view of Jubilee House which is visible on the right hand side. This photograph shows the relationship of Jubilee House better in its garage which is fairly visible from the main garden area of Tarrance. Further down the garden, beyond a sectioned off part but still part of the garden to Tarrance is the application property is far more visible. And to the rear, this shows the relationship of Friarfield with its swimming pool and tennis court to the application site which is on the left hand side and is annotated for you. Turning to look at the proposal in more detail, this shows the proposed site plan. The majority of development would be along the eastern boundary of the site connecting the dwelling to the existing detached double garage which would also be raised in height. The proposed ground floor is shown here and the proposed first floor which would be new. To the bottom of the screen are the rooms adjacent to Tarrance which would be along the eastern boundary. Members will note that these are all secondary habitable rooms and therefore the windows to these propose to be obscurely glazed and non-opening below a height of 1.7 metres from floor level and a condition is proposed to secure this. To the left hand side, the rear of the property, windows are proposed to face towards Friarfield and these would serve a master bedroom. Looking at the elevations, this is the front northern elevation and you will see in the bottom right corner the existing elevations to give you a comparison. To the eastern side of the dwelling at first floor is the main bulk of the extension which officers consider is proportionate. This is the rear elevation with the extension on the right hand side and the new first floor window proposed into the rear elevation. This shows the proposed eastern elevation which would face towards Tarrance. The mass would be increased and the red lines, the dotted red lines show the existing outline of the host property. And this is the western elevation which better shows the link I believe to the dwelling and the former garage along with its raised roof height. Again, the red dotted line denotes the existing garage and its height. Finally, this shows the visuals of the proposal as viewed from Tarrance and Friarfield. So on the left hand side is the existing photograph and on the right hand side there is a photo visual of how it would look following the development. Objections have been received from the occupants of Tarrance, Terracotta House and Friarfield and these are all set out in the main committee report. In addition, Wethorp Parish councillors objected. It was they who referred the application for determination today and unfortunately they were unable to attend in person and so a statement has been provided which is set out in the briefing update report. In addition, the update reports additional comments from the owners of Friarfield who were also unable to attend. The concerns from objectors primarily relate to design and neighbour amenity. Turning to design, officers are of the view that proposal would be in keeping with the character appearance and style of the host dwelling. The extensions would be subservient and would not appear unduly dominant or incongruous. Whilst the first floor would add bulk, it would not be to a degree whereby unacceptable harm to the character of the area would result. In terms of neighbour amenity, the bulk of the extension would be to the rearmost portion of the substantial garden of Tarrance. It would be readily visible and we acknowledge that. However, so too is the existing dwelling and we feel that on balance, the impact would not be unacceptable. No direct overlooking would result and conditions are recommended as I mentioned earlier with regards to obscure glazing and non-opening. To the rear, the proposed first floor window would permit views across the garden of Friarfield. However, officers do not consider that an unacceptable loss of privacy would result to occupants. 60 metres would be achieved in terms of window to window separation and privacy would be maintained to the swimming pool area and immediate amenity space for the neighbour. To the north, the increased height of the garage would not result in unacceptable overbearing to the garden of Terracotta House. Despite the concerns of neighbours and the parish, officers are of the view that the proposal is acceptable and therefore our recommendation to you today is one of approval subject to the conditions set out within the main committee report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, thanks. The existing building has a series of monopitched roofs with a larger dormer element facing the north east towards Tarrance. The existing double garage sits to the north of the house and has a standard pitched roof, the ridge of which runs parallel to the front elevation of the house. The dual pitch roof looks a little bit out of place with the rest of the house being the only one that's dual pitched and of much shallower pitch than the main roofs on the house. Forty nine metres in front of Jubilee House is Terracotta House which is locally listed and 46 metres to the north east is Tarrance which sits in a 108 metre long half acre plot. Friarfield sits some 60 metres away and is angled obliquely to Jubilee House to the south east in a two acre garden with a further 1.25 acres of woodland to the south west. There's mature planting as you could see from the photos to the eastern western boundaries of Jubilee House. And again from the photos you could see that the rear garden of Jubilee House is at high level approximately 1.1 metres above the house floor level and slopes up towards the back and down towards First Drift. As part of the original house application, Terracotta House had planning approved for a double garage to the south, the southern end sorry of their garden adjacent to Jubilee House's garage but more centrally on the plot. The drawings don't seem to have been submitted for that garage, only the site plan, but it does show that the floor level of that garage would be 1.3 metres higher than the floor level of Terracotta House and a ridge line for a double garage would be in the region of five metres high. At that angle, basically it would completely obscure the view of the garage roof extension and the side extension with the angles of view. I don't know if you can go back to the site plan, the aerial photo, but you can see that the main area of trees on the Tarrance boundary are where the highest points are on the proposal and the lower elements of roof are where there are gaps in the planting there. Jubilee House has a basement on the southern side and a mezzanine over the central space where the roof is the highest. The clients did look initially at simply extending the mezzanine across the whole central space which would have benefited from the dual dormer windows and the south, the southern window. But they felt it would, sorry, and that wouldn't have required a planning application, but they did feel that the house had more potential and didn't want to spoil the feeling of height in the central space. We've worked closely with the planners to develop the scheme and address the concerns raised by Tarrance, having withdrawn the initial application and gone back in with revised scheme and addressed the concerns of Tarrance, Terracotta and Friarfield, all of which we thought had been resolved before this was asked to come to committee. The design has to work with the complex arrangements of existing roof lines to maximise the space internally and whilst keeping the extension 400 millimetres below the existing ridge line, the roof lines have been amended between this application and the last to reduce the amount of full height elevation facing towards Tarrance boundary and also raise the window sill heights on the first floor even though they are four bathrooms and one guest room and would be opaque glazed. The elevations are all broken up with a mixture of materials including a corten cladding and stamped stone on the front elevation and rendered to match the existing cream colour at ground floor level and then a darker grey colour on the first floor to reduce the visual impact on the eastern and southern elevations. My clients, basically, it's a four bedroom house, two rooms of which are used as study offices at the moment, so they really just want to gain guest accommodation. And looking at all of the different options to extend the property, we felt that this had the least impact on the adjoining neighbours, increased the footprint by the smallest amount and hopefully, as I said, addresses the concerns that have been raised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, have any questions please? councillor Hiller?
Thank you Chair and through you. Did I hear you correctly saying that you'd looked at the objections, the original objections from the neighbours and you've redesigned the property in what you thought were, it's certainly enough from a design change point of view to appease those objections and those objections still remain. Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, that's correct. So the roof height over the garage was taller, the high eaves line was along the Tarrance boundary previously. So we've taken one element or just under half of that roof and flipped it round so that the low eaves are where the sort of gap in the planting is over the garage area. The floor levels also dropped down to the garage floor level in that area so that again it just reduces the height impact as much as possible.
Through you Chair. Yes, thank you for that. I heard you correctly and thanks for confirming that. I actually sat on the planning committee 10 years ago when we first approved this property, so I know this site quite well and I do remember its very distinctive design. Did you have any comments at all from the ward councillor? Did you seek any thoughts from the ward councillor? Councillor over?
No, I'm afraid you didn't.
Okay, anybody else? Any further questions? No, thank you very much. Okay then, we'll move straight into any questions for officers at all? None of those? To debate then? Who would like to start debates? Did you say, yeah councillor Hiller? Sorry, I thought so you hadn't.
This is a very, very interesting property. I thought that, as I said, 10 years ago and it's almost an alien design in its setting, but I think it works extremely well. It really is quite a stunning property and you are to be congratulated sir if you are the owner of this property. It really is a quite delightful house. I think what it is you're proposing to do to the property, architect design, is I think completely acceptable Chair. I don't have any issues with this at all. I think it's nestled in a very pleasant rural location with excellent outlooks and I think its impact on the neighbouring properties is benign at worst and almost imperceptible at best. So I don't have any issues with this at all Chair, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hiller, anybody else? Councillor Rush?
Thank you Chair, yes I visited the site yesterday and I think the whole area is dominated by rather large housing stock. Lot of the houses have had in-field developments in the back gardens. I cannot find any real reason why this shouldn't be not granted, so I would be going for to grant this application.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay, should we go for, oh hang on, councillor Shane?
Sorry Chair, yeah. Just to add to the debate, again I do like the design. It's away from neighbouring properties, the mature planting obscures the views, so I will be voting in favour of the application.
Thank you, thank you. It would have been nice, I must admit to have had the Wethorp councillor, parish councillor and the local councillor here to have a little chat with to see how they really felt about it and what particularly they were worried about, but unfortunately they can't make it, we can't do that. But personally, I can't see anything wrong with it. As councillor said, it's lovely and I wish I had it instead of you. But it's very nice, I don't see any issue. I think the planning side of it is really good and I think officers have worked with you well and got a good outcome, so I think it's great. So I'd be supporting it. Councillor Hiller for a proposal please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Quite obviously, my proposal is we accept the officer's recommendation with regard to you owning the property Chair. I would imagine that most properties have a price and I think a reasonable negotiation may very well be forthcoming, but that aside, I propose we accept the officer's recommendation, thank you.
Thank you. Seconder please, councillor Rush and all those in favour. That's a unanimous decision, so the application is approved, thank you and good luck, thank you. Right, councillor Hiller if you'd like to deposit yourself in the public side, please. There's no rush, I'm waiting till you're in position. Have you got a nameplate for yourself? Just so people can see it, they want to see it. Thanks Louise. Okay everybody, we'll move on then to the final item on the agenda, 5.3, which relates to 28 West End Road in Maxi and will this afternoon be presented by Asif Ali when you're ready.
Thank you Chair. The application before members is for the demolition of an existing conservatory and the erection of a single storey reextension and the installation of a timber pergola at 28 Western Road in Maxi. This location plan shows the area. The application site is located in the conservation area of Maxi. To the south is Maxi High Street. You've got the neighbours to the left hand side. The neighbours closest to the proposal would be five and six school close to the east and to the west would be number 30 Western Road. So this is the existing plans for the site. You've got a bungalow structure with a dormer on the rear, you've got the existing conservatory structures. This is the proposed plan, so you've got the single storey rear extension that extends a similar projection to the larger conservatory. It goes up to the boundary with number 30 Western Road. There's no decrease in separation distances with number five and six school close which are to the right and then you've got the timber pergola which is set in slightly. These are the proposed block plans. The proposed extension would project roughly four metres. The timber pergola would be around 1.9 metres. The height for the extension will be three metres and approximately 2.5 metre height for the timber pergola. You've got obviously the neighbouring properties to the left hand side with school close. This just shows a view down towards school close. This is another image of the properties, number five and number six school close. You've got the larger conservatory just shown in the picture. That's number 30 Western Road. Number 30 Western Road does have a single storey rear projection. The proposed rear extension for the application site would extend approximately 1.5 metres beyond that neighbour's projection. You'd obviously have the timber pergola added to that. This is just a rear elevation picture of the application site. No neighbour comments were received for the application. The conservation officer was in support of the application and there was no objection from the tree officer and no comments were received from the parish. The material considerations were impact on design and character of the site and surrounding Maxi conservation area and neighbour amenity. Officers considered that the size and scale of the proposal were acceptable and subject to the standard conditions for time, materials and plans, officers were minded to approve, were recommended approval on this application. Thank you Chair.
I've got mic problems, thank you Asif. Okay, we have a speaker, councillor Hiller. You have five minutes when you're ready to...
I don't think I'll take five minutes Chair but that's very kind of you to make the offer. Thank you Members, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the applicant, my wife, who has owned this property for 30 years. The application is for an orangery type single story, full width extension to the rear of the house and element of a phased programme of sustainable improvements which is currently underway. Members might have noticed the property is situated within the conservation area of the village and so external alterations are of course subject to closer scrutiny by planning officers as Asif has pointed out. But I trust members will be reassured that the proposal has the support of the council's very experienced conservation officer, the support of Maxi Parish Council and no objections from either any of the neighbours or indeed that august body, Historic England. Whilst that's me done Chair, it might be worth reassuring members that although the extension is somewhat larger than the conservatories it replaces. My wife has designed it to be sustainable for future occupiers and far more energy efficient using very high thermal efficiency, glass in the roof and bi-fold doors and the latest insulation and heating methodology. Happy to answer any questions Chair, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hiller, anybody got any questions? No? Oh, councillor Jones?
Thank you Chair, just one thing, this is a conserv, when you say an orangery, how come that you went for, just purely out of interest for a conservatory rather than the sort of warm roof conservatories? People don't tend to, you know, I respect the insulation. How come you didn't go for a warm roof rather than the conservatory that you appeared to be going for? The glass on the roof or whatever?
Because my wife designed it, councillor Jones and wobetied. No, being serious, I mean, an orangery is a bit of an affectation, I get that but the term orangery is applicable to brick wall, brick wall, solid roof with orangery type skylights which are in this heat reflecting self-cleaning glass with bi-fold doors and it's got underfloor heating and all this sort of thing. So it is a different animal I have to say and far more energy efficient than the existing conservatories, so I'm told.
Okay, anybody got any questions at all for Asif or legal officer at all about it? No? Debate then, anybody got anything to say? Particularly councillor Hogg?
I think I'm right in saying that the reason this has come because of the the fact that it's councillor Hiller's wife that's putting forward the application and I can't see anything wrong with it, much to merit it, happy to support it. That was as beef as I could be, really.
Fine, anybody else wish to add to that or should we go to a proposal? Councillor Rush? Yeah, if you've got a proposal, if everybody else wants to talk? Use, sorry, use the mic.
I recommend we go along with the planning officer's recommendation to grant this application subject to the imposition of the attached conditions.
Excellent. Councillor Hogg seconding? All those in favour? That's a unanimous decision so the application is approved, thank you very much. Okay, that brings to an end today's meeting. Thank you very much everybody for coming. See you again at the next one, hopefully we'll get to do the site visits for that one and we won't have another storm, zebby day or whatever's coming. Take care of yourselves, thank you officers, thanks for...